Madam Clerk, can we call roll, please?
Commissioner Beard?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Solorio?
Here.
Vice Chair Tu Ha Nguyen?
Here.
And Chair Clompinstein?
Here. Okay, starting with oral communication, I don't have any pink cards, so we'll move on to consent items. We have 2A and 2B. 2A is receive and file the Housing Authority Status Report for June of 2017, and 2B is receive and file minutes from the meeting held on June 27, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second it.
Oh, nothing.
Right, yeah.
Here we go. Mine just popped.
No.
Did you vote already?
I have a screen up to where I can vote.
I don't have anything.
You already did?
Yeah.
Oh, mine just popped up. I get it. Gotcha.
Going to be vote by?
Got it? Nope. Mr. Bowie. Stephanie? No. No.
Nothing showing up on his screen. Mine took a while.
Okay. Want to do an oral?
Please.
Okay.
Commissioner Beard?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Solorio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tu Ha Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Clompinstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Moving on, I don't see any items for consideration. Any matters from Chair Commissioners and Director? All right, I'll go ahead and adjourn. The next regular Housing Authority meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 22, 2017, at 6:30 here at the Community Meeting Center.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now convene the City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Tu Ha Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Clompinstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bowie?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Who's going to do the invocation? You are. Okay. Maria Stipe to lead us in the invocation. If I could ask Councilmember Beard to lead us in the pledge of allegiance thereafter.
Dear Lord, as we gather here this evening to consider the issues of our community, we ask that you be with us and guide the decisions that are made for the benefit of all. Amen.
Amen.
Please place a flag, place your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag on the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move on to presentations. We have two tonight. The first one is a presentation from the county's heat unit, which is Human Trafficking Task Force, to combat human exploitation and trafficking in Orange County, provided by the District Attorney's Office, and we welcome the District Attorney, Tony Rukakis. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, it's great to be here. And I want to tell you, it's great to see that we have Boy Scouts here, and what a great group. And it's nice for them to be able to understand something about civics and what goes on in local government and so forth. And I would like to pause for a minute and, however, give them an opportunity to leave because, at least just for a few minutes while we do this presentation, because frankly, this is a little rough for them. And I don't really want to subject 12, 13-year-old boys to this particular subject. I don't think they'd be ready for it. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask to give them an opportunity to step out.
Most certainly. I had a chat with them briefly, so if we could ask if you guys want to just sort of step outside for a few minutes while we do this presentation, and then we'll invite you back in.
Of course, we're not asking the parents to step outside.
Yeah. Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, thank you for that. And let me start by saying that, you know, a few years ago, I was frankly quite surprised to start hearing a lot of, I don't know what you'd call it, and I don't want to call it noise, but a lot of information about slavery going on in our state. And then the more I heard about it, the more presentations were made at the, for example, at the California DA's Association in Sacramento when we were having a meeting there, and starting to look into it, begin to realize that there's slavery going on in our state. And I don't want to say anything. Anything I say here, please don't take that as detracting in any way from the city of Garden Grove is a great place to live. Garden Grove is a tremendous place to live. It's a fine city. I remember how much I liked it when I was shopping for homes here many years ago. So, anything that we say in the next few minutes is not meant to have any negative impact on that, of course. But we do have a problem, and we have a problem with human slavery. And I'm not just talking about, you know, some minor rendition of that. This is major, this is slavery of the most traditional type, where human beings are bought and sold for, you know, as commodities for a price, in fact, surprisingly low price at times. When you hear about it, it's shocking. They're beaten and tortured. They are required to work involuntarily in the most vile of ways. And with what we've been working on lately has been the whole prostitution side of this. So, we established a unit in 2013, which is our human trafficking unit, in the DA's office, and we're working in conjunction with the Human Trafficking Task Force in the county. And we've had a lot of success since we started this unit. We prosecuted many of these slave owner pimps, and we've successfully prosecuted about 250 of them. And most of them have been, and they've all been, everybody that we've prosecuted has been convicted, except for the pending cases. We have about 60 or 70 pending cases. And the convictions have resulted in prison in almost all the cases, and some life sentences. So, it's been a very effective unit, and it's making some difference, but not enough to put this thing out. So, we continue to need to work on this. We're working in conjunction with, like I say, with the police and so forth. And what I'd like to do, just to give you a little more detail about some of the things that are happening, is I'm going to ask Brad Schoenlaban to, he's a deputy district attorney. He's been involved in this since the beginning, from the ground floor up, as this whole thing was starting. And I'd like to have him give you a few of the details, just for a few minutes. Thank you.
Brad?
Thank you. All right, can we turn, wonderful. Thank you, and good evening. Thank you for having me. I've got about 10 minutes, I'm told, to tell you everything I can about human trafficking in the Orange County. The first question that we must realize when we're talking about human trafficking in Orange County is, do we have a problem? Well, when we started in the unit, we started with two deputy district attorneys. We now have six. And we have full caseloads. We have a massive problem, and it's a problem that exists throughout every city in this county, whether it be on the streets in Santa Ana, in apartments in Irvine, in motels here, in massage parlors. We have a problem. And I've seen cases being generated from every city in this county. An example, just to show you how bad it is, this is an escort ad for a prostitute. You'll notice it says the city is Newport Beach, and they're advertising 100 percent young girl, right? And that's on the internet, for all the world to see. Another example, you can, this is an order form for a person. You could give me a description of a woman that you'd like to have, her height, her weight, her hair color, her eye color, her ethnicity, her age, and I can fill in drop-down menu. I can order her like I'm ordering shoes. I can have her anywhere to your house within an hour, I promise you. All right? Now, so, the reason I show you this is because it's a realization that we have this problem everywhere. We don't always see it. It's sometimes hidden in hotels, and motels, and houses, and apartments, and so on. But it certainly exists, and this is proof of that. And so, the question is simply, who are our victims of human trafficking? To understand the problem and to tackle the problem, we have to understand what we're dealing with. So, we have to look at our victims. So, you look at the numbers. 1.6 million children run away each year in this country. One in three will be recruited by a pimp within 48 hours of running away. 100,000 minors are used in prostitution each year nationally, and the average age of a woman who starts in the life of prostitution is 12 to 14 years old. Now, we might see her at 18, 24, 30, 16, but when she started, the chances are she started between 12 and 14 years old. They're babies. And they've lived a life that most people should never have to live. Now, who are those victims? They are our most vulnerable. There are victims like this. This is a picture of a 12-year-old kid who had spent most of her life in group homes, foster homes, and so on, until she was molested, and recruited, and pimped out. When we found her, we found her at age 18. She had been on the streets since 12 years old, covered in tattoos and a lengthy criminal record, and she was being trafficked by a defendant that we prosecuted. When we find her, we look at her, and we see, okay, here we have a criminal. She's covered in tattoos, criminal history. She's a prostitute on the street. She's certainly a criminal. Our mission, though, now, is to look at that person and look at what's going on behind that, not just what she looks like now, but that, that 12-year-old kid. That's who we have to keep in mind. And our victims, when I say they're most vulnerable, they are our most vulnerable. I used to see pictures like this and go, oh, gosh, I hope they find that kid. Now, I think, boy, I hope that kid's not already being trafficked. And this is an example of a missing child ad that we found, and then we set up a date with her and found her in a hotel room, right? And this was her ad. The reason it's blocked out is because she was 15 at the time in the ad, and she's fully naked on the internet for anyone to buy. And that was here, in Orange County. And the victim vulnerability factors, and I don't read them all. You can imagine what they are, right? The victims that are targeted in human trafficking are oftentimes the victims who have no families, no structure. They crave someone to simply just ask them, how are they doing? Or to say, hey, I love you. Or, hey, you belong to our family, right? They're over-sexualized at an early age. They're often abused physically, mentally, sexually, and so on. But the scary part is, it's not just those victims that you might expect. It's anyone with access to these things, such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram. I once asked a pimp, what would be the fastest way for me to traffic a kid? If I wanted to start out, like, how do I do it? You educate me. And he just calmly looked at me and just said, Facebook. Go on Facebook. And so, we did. And we recruited kids ourselves on Facebook to try to save. It was simple as that. I talked to another girl who said the same thing. I say, hey, where would you go? She goes, oh, social media. I'd recruit anyone who looked insecure. So, imagine if her requirements are simply teenager and insecure. Who factors that, right? So, are vulnerable. And who are our defendants? This is an example of one of the defendants we prosecuted about two years ago. He's currently serving a life sentence in prison, but he is very common, he's very typical of our defendants in trafficking. He's gang background, violent background, sexual assault, domestic violence, drugs, and so on, as you might expect. And the reason I point this out to you is because we can't just look at it as a prostitution problem, saying it's two consenting adults. This is what comes to our county, traffickers, people with violent criminal history, who bring nothing but violence and abuse. So, what has happened in the world of human trafficking in law enforcement over the last few years? Prior to the starting of our unit, and even some into our unit, we failed as a community in law enforcement and just as a community in this field. We failed to properly look at the problem. We failed to look at the victims. We failed to understand how to prosecute the defendants, how to even investigate the defendants. And I'm here to tell you, fortunately, that's changing. It has not changed, but it's changing. I will tell you now, nationwide, I've been able to go all over the country and train prosecutors and law enforcement throughout the country, and I've seen the same thing everywhere I go. There's a shift in law enforcement right now, and there's a shift in the community, that we're now looking at people, like I just showed you, to actually go after and stop. And we're using more effective methods. This is an example of one of the methods that we're employing when we work on these cases. No longer do we take a victim of human trafficking and put her in a white room, like an interrogation room, and grill her about her exploits. Instead, we put her in a soft room with a nice leather couch, a blanket, and a little monkey that she can grab. And if she grabs the monkey and cuddles it, you got a chance. If she throws against the wall, you got a long night ahead of you, right? But the point is, it's a completely different approach, and that approach has been remarkably successful. In addition to how we treat the victims, we have done things like this tonight, meeting with city council members, meeting with the community. I've spoken in front of Saddleback, Saddleback Church, Eastside Church, Friends Church. There's multiple community groups that are getting involved in this fight. And we in the District Attorney's Office have realized that that collaboration, that type of model, is the only way we'll be successful. No longer are we looking at it saying, we're only going to work as a single silo of the District Attorney's Office. We're going to work with law enforcement as one, with the community as one. And in doing so, we've seen remarkable results. And I'm going to show you an example of that. I was talking to a pimp, and I said, hey, what is the worst city or the worst county to do prostitution, and why? And this guy's been all over the country, and this was his answer. Now, forgive me, I know as a rule of PowerPoint, you are not allowed to read slides. I'm going to do it anyway, so I'm breaking the rule. His answer is, Orange County, seriously. The police here are completely out of control. They're all over the place, setting people up all the time. The pimps go to prison, and the hoes go free. The DA and police are organized, and the task force is relentless. The sentences and offers are too high, and you can't get probation. You have to go to prison. The jail itself is like a prison. I'm never coming back to this county. I'm out. Now, that is a sign of success, right? When defendants don't want to come back here, you know you're headed in the right direction. And by no means am I here to say that we've done such a remarkable job, we deserve a pat on the back. I'm only showing you this to show that we're just on the right track, right? We've just started scratching the surface of what we are capable of. So, why does it matter? It matters not just because of the safety of our own community and our own victims, but it matters because of these young women. This is an Orange County Register article where it shows the course of one year, at minimum, all of these women worked in the life of prostitution. All of them turned up dead somewhere in Orange County, whether it be in a 17-year-old at the top, Aubriana Parks in Yorba Linda, who was butchered and left in Yorba Linda, or someone in Ladera Ranch, Newport Beach, Costa Mesa. To look at this problem and say that it doesn't affect us is just not correct. It's not accurate. It does affect us. And we have to now, as a community, start sending a message that these young women and men who are involved and exploited by traffickers, they do matter to us, that we do care, and we need to send a message to the traffickers, that we will do anything we can to make sure that they can end their exploitation. So, with that, what do we need? We simply need a number of things. One, I am only limited by the resources at my disposal. In our unit, if you were to double the amount of police officers that work these types of cases, you would double my victims, which means you'd double my defendants. It's not just resources. It's legislative efforts. We need our legislation in the state of California to pass laws that allow us to prosecute both the traffickers, as well as laws that allow us to help the victims. And we need community awareness, which is why I'm so grateful that you've allowed me so much time, so that the community can get involved, and no longer can these women in exploitation be looked at as pariahs, but rather, we can wrap our arms around these women and say, we are here to help you. We are here to get you out of the life. And we need to do so because these victims do matter. And I want to end on just one hopeful note. I worked with a woman years ago, and when we started with her, she told us, when we first met her, she told us, used some choice colorful language with us, and didn't exactly want our help. And we hung in there with her time and time again, and she went to jail multiple times. And ultimately, over the last two years, she's been able to not only get on the right track, but she now is gainfully employed full-time, and a full-time student, and has one of the most beautiful two-year-old little girls you've ever seen in your life. It is possible. But to do that, to get that result, we all have to work together as a community. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I do thank you for your time. Thank you.
So, I wanted to thank you for the time and the attention, and just understand that, I think that Brad pretty much said it, but raising community awareness is certainly important, and that's hopefully what we're doing here. Also, resources, we work with the police, so certainly, if you find out that the Garden Grove Police Department is putting some people into the Human Trafficking Task Force or something, they're not wasting their time, just so that you understand that. Thank you very much, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
I'll send the Boy Scouts back in.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to say that. Go ahead. So, go ahead, proceed. Okay, we'll move on to Presentation 1B on Building Abatement and Code Enforcement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I could just make a quick comment about this. Lisa Kim, our Director of Community Economic Development, gave all of the department directors this very brief PowerPoint presentation, kind of a Building Abatement 101, on the work that they're doing to try and help neighbors who are dealing with property that's not looking good, or people aren't keeping it up. I know all of you get complaints from time to time about it. Our office gets complaints. And I thought she and her staff did a nice presentation talking about code enforcement versus building abatement, and I thought it would be something that the community would be interested to see, which is why we have this presentation. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Kim and David Dent, our Chief Building Official. So, I will turn it over to them.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I would like to introduce our new chief building official, David Dent, tonight. He and Allison Wilson, our Neighborhood Improvement Manager, will be presenting our Building Abatement and Code Enforcement 101. And really, it's a coordinated effort between both divisions as it relates to enforcement activities within the city of Garden Grove. So, I'm going to turn it over to David and Allison to really highlight their activities, and their processes, and some of their statistics relating to cases that are currently underway. So, I'm going to turn it over to David first.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members, and fellow citizens. Today, we're going to talk about Building Abatement and Code Enforcement 101. I'll first begin by explaining the fact that Building Abatement and Code Enforcement are two separate divisions. Oftentimes, Code Enforcement is an umbrella for issues in the community, but in reality, there's two different divisions that handle two separate, I guess, scopes of work. And I'll speak on behalf of the Building Abatement, and Allison will speak on behalf of the Code Enforcement. We'll start with Building Abatement. Building Abatement deals with structural code issues. And what we mean by structural code issues are non-permitted additions, conversions, and basically, anything that's dealing with detached or attached structures that were built without a permit. And a permit is an approved process through the City Development Department that goes through planning, and then our building, and oftentimes, engineering and fire, and some other associated divisions, that will allow a person to get approved correctly, and per minimum codes for the state of California. So, as we begin, a code enforcement or a building abatement issue comes in through various ways, beginning with either a phone call to our department, or a walk-in, written-out complaint, or via the internet. But normally, when they come in, they're either submitted through a citizen that's complaining, that wants to be kept anonymous, or sometimes, they want to be kept, you know, in a way such that they're not involved in the process. We typically have some control of that in the beginning, but if it gets to a certain point, we wouldn't have control of that. But the tools that we use for enforcement begin with typically a phone call or a request, and it'll begin with an inspection of the property to verify that addition or violation exists. And for our department, we have a staff of three, a supervisor, and two inspectors, splitting the city in half from east to west. So, they take various complaints, normally in the amount of about, I'd say, anywhere between five and 10 a week, we get a call regarding a violation. So, when it comes to that, they'll go out there, they'll do an inspection to verify. Hopefully, we can get voluntary compliance with the inspection. If that's the case, we'll typically inspect the property, note the violations, and work voluntarily with the owner to alleviate the violations. Most of the time, they need permits to be resolved. But some of the other tools that we use, if we don't get compliance or a voluntary inspection, is inspection warrants, search warrants, and those are some of the things that we'll use in the world if we don't get compliance and we need to inspect. Minimum safety is our goal. You know, we want to make sure that we're inspecting the complete property, and we're actually fixing the violations. So, when it comes to those two items, once we do have approval of that violation existing on the property, we'll typically send out a notice of violation or a notice in order, which really scripts out what needs to get done to resolve and a timeframe. A lot of times, the biggest difference between Building Abatement and Code Enforcement is, a permit is often required for that resolution, which usually takes some time. So, we know we normally get complaints, and we get, oftentimes, we want updates as to how long it's taking or what's going on with it. But we do work diligently with the owner. Sometimes, there's financial issues. Sometimes, there's other issues that they're dealing with that we like to work with them on. We try to get voluntary compliance as much as we can in the process. So, when we go through the process, we have a couple examples of projects that we've worked on. As you can see in this one here, it's quite a mess. I mean, we have electrical violations, we have hoarding issues, and in certain cases, it's hard to believe that someone's actually living in a situation like this, but it does exist. And in that case, we'll hopefully work with the owner. If they need extra help, we often get other departments involved. Sometimes, the police department will work with us on getting the person some help if they need it. But again, in this case, we'd send out a letter, this might be a rental property, and work with them to clean it up, and really push them to be more of, like I said, a voluntary abatement. If a problem like this does persist, we do have tools, receiverships, and some other means of abating the problem. So, the flow typically goes from a complaint filed, we'll mail out the correction. If we do invest time from the city and funds that aren't available to the owner, we do If we do invest time from the city and funds that aren't available to the owner, we do lien the property to receive those and recoup the cost. And then if it gets to a certain extent, we do involve the city attorney, and we push it to litigation in that case. And again, these are some before and after pictures of actually successful abatement cases, where the owners come in, we work with them, they've gotten the proper permits, and they've actually resolved the issue, and it's all about the value. You know, if you look down any street, you want every house to be at a high enough value to where people will enjoy driving down that street. When it gets to a point where it's, it looks like the before picture, again, the value affects everybody, and everybody in the city, and we try to take that in mind. We try to keep the value of the city at the highest, because that's what you guys are paying your taxes for. And again, here's our couple other cases. Again, as you can see in the before picture, the person started their home construction without plans or a permit, and wasn't very successful in completing it. So again, the house in this case was sold, the new owner came in, did the improvements, and therefore, you have a successful abatement process. Typically, over the years, we'll get, on average, about four or 500 cases a year, and we try to obviously close as the same amount. And then those that carry over are typically ones that are, have an extended permit time, they're in the attorney's office, or some of those things that we'll work with. And my staff, again, has taken on other venues as far as the dispensaries, and some of the other things that involve abatement procedures. But again, I will now pass over to code enforcement, and she will carry on with the presentation.
Okay, thank you, David. So, much like building abatement, code enforcement has many of the same remedies and processes that building abatement follows. The primary difference between building abatement and code enforcement, like David mentioned, building abatement deals with structural issues. Code enforcement primarily deals with property maintenance standards and land use issues. So essentially, everything that you can see from the outside is what code enforcement addresses. Code enforcement has four officers that work in the field, and they are each assigned a geographic area, which is depicted here on the map. We have much of the same processes that David's group has, but the one thing that we're kind of proud of is our community partnerships. We've recently had a partnership with Living Spring Church, which is one of the churches here in Garden Grove, and they do some fantastic work. They have a stable of volunteers, many of whom are skilled in the trades, and they have approached us looking for people who have violations, that want to correct them, but don't necessarily have the wherewithal to do it. Maybe their health or their finances prevents them from doing the work themselves. So I've listed this one picture here. This is the home of a World War II veteran who was just not capable of maintaining his home, so I was able to reach out to Living Spring. I barely got the words out of my mouth, and they said, yes, of course, we'll help. So they brought in an army of volunteers, and they had equipment and products donated, what they didn't get donated that they needed for the job, they did fundraising on their own, to completely clear the property of violations, and basically, give this man his home back. But sometimes, people aren't as willing to work with code enforcement as that gentleman was, so we have to go through an abatement process. This is one of our most current abatement cases. This house had an awful lot of debris outside, and the homeowner was allowing homeless people to essentially camp and cook in his driveway, which, as you can imagine, created a huge problem for the neighbors. He wasn't particularly willing to work with us, so we had to go through an abatement process. And our process flows a lot like the building abatement process. The complaint was received, we mailed our notice of violation, we made some re-inspections, saw that there was no compliance, so we contacted the city attorney, determined the best course of action was to go to court and have an abatement warrant issued. Essentially, an abatement warrant is an order of the court for the city to go in and clear the violations. And as part of that whole process, at the end, we can recover all of our costs through placing a lien on the property. And then we go out and select a contractor to clear the violations. But I included this before, during, the middle slide, and as just a, an illustration of how our code enforcement officers always have to be prepared and think outside the box. While we were doing our walkthrough of this one to list our scope of work for the contractor, we discovered an active hive of bees in that trash can. So we immediately had to regroup and hire a bee-removal company. So it's, the cases may seem the same, but they're all different, there's unique quirks in all of them. Here's another case. This was an elderly woman who was not capable of keeping her yard clean, just didn't have the wherewithal to clean it up herself. But our officers are assigned to geographic areas, so they really get to know the neighborhoods and know the people in the neighborhoods. So in this particular case, our officer was able to reach out to this woman's adult son, who lived out of state, who was able to put her, our officer, in contact with his best friend, who happens to be a contractor that lived in Garden Grove. So together, they were able to work together to clear this violation at this woman's home. And here are our code enforcement statistics. Routinely, each year, we handle about 3,000 cases. A little, yeah, more than half of them are self-initiated, which means that when our officers are out in the field, they'll look to see what violations are out there, and they will initiate those, as well as responding to complaints. And that concludes our presentation, but David and I are both happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Please.
I think, obviously, this is, this is a great window into what is done from both of your departments, and is this something that could be put on the city website, or even just a scaled-down version of this, maybe without the pictures or whatever, is prudent? But just to have this for the public to be able to look at and digest, and if they have questions about code enforcement or building abatement, it's a tool for us to be able to say, well, on the website, there is this really great kind of 101, and that explains what it is that you do day-to-day.
We can absolutely do that.
That'd be great.
We can put it both on code enforcement and building abatement's webpage.
Thank you.
Yes. Chris?
This also includes commercial properties, correct? You said residential.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. Do we have a senior, or any kind of grant program to assist financially hardship cases? I think we had some at one time.
We do. The Neighborhood Improvement Division has a senior grant program for income-eligible seniors 62 and older that own their home. It's a grant for up to $5,000 to do repairs to their home, and our code enforcement officers do take that information out in the field with them, and if they see someone that they believe might be eligible, they pass that out in the field.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you very much, guys, for their presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members, so thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes to talk about that. I thought it'd be helpful, especially for people watching online and people that are here, so it gives you a little insight to a lot of the issues that we're dealing with. I'm sorry I didn't introduce Allison, I didn't see her back there when I first introduced the staff, so thanks to all of you.
Okay, we'll move on to oral communications. I do have a number of cards, so we'll start, we'll dive right in and get going on it. Peggy Bergen.
Been a long time. Hello, new people, and hello, two old people. But...
Not that old.
I just basically, well, I no longer live in Garden Grove, but I still own a piece of property in Garden Grove, so I'm still very interested, and I still go to a lot of activities in your city when I find out about them, so I'm still a very happy Garden Grove person. But basically, I'm here tonight, my one thing was, I didn't realize it was on the agenda when I filled out my card, the street name. Now, I don't care that it's a Vietnamese name, that has nothing to do with it, but I remember quite a few years ago, long before the Crystal Cathedral kind of went into a sad state, and they lost the property and all, Reverend Schuler came to the pastor at St. Callistus and said, "I would like to change the name from Chapman to Garden Grove Boulevard to Crystal Cathedral Way," in case somebody couldn't find his beautiful church. So our pastor was very, very calm, he goes, "That's okay, I know, that's agreeable," but he said, "Don't forget, you're going to have to pay, then, for all of the map changes, all of those types of things, you're gonna have to pay the city to change this and their things. Also, if nothing else, between me and the people that live along the street, you're gonna have to pay all of our..." In St. Callistus, there are, was the school and the church, which has a lot of paperwork, with a lot of paperwork that they own that says St. Callistus where we are, and they also had 30 groups that had their own private stationery. So he said, "Now, we've got enough of this for a couple of years. Now, don't forget, you're gonna have to pay this, pay us, if you do this, because we already own this for our church that's on Lewis Street, and if Lewis Street no longer exists, we're gonna need new stationery, and our budget does not entail us to buy stationery twice." So like, there's a lot of other things, and then also, do we know, I mean, well, this one is more of a business street, see, that means I didn't even realize it when I just read the little bits of information. This is Business Center Parkway, so I guess it really wasn't named after anybody other than the business. But a lot of times, people want to change names away from existing names that meant something in the history of the city. A city name, a lot of times, when the city is first formed, means something. They're the people that worked hard to make a city, and even this business. I, as a non-Asian person, would probably be more inclined to find out, find something on Business Center Parkway than in Asian things, because basically, I know most Asian places, except for Asian restaurants, I will say that, I don't frequent. But that's something to think of when anybody comes to the city to change the name of a street, that there's a lot of paperwork and a lot of financial thing that they are going to have to pay for, because the city's already put those signs up once. They're not about to start changing them. The map people have already put that in their books, so that's one of the things I'd like to speak, and I was hoping there'd be a presentation tonight on that little box shopping center, whatever they call that, the one that is taking over Black Angus.
Steelcraft.
Steelcraft, thank you. I knew they were little boxes. But anyways, but I think something like that would be very good. I've actually been in two of them. One of them, I believe, up towards Anaheim or Fullerton, that was very nice, and another one out of state. And it's a very good way to get a lot of things in an area with kind of distinctive angles, and make it so it's a nice, attractive place, with a lot of shops, a lot of different shops, without having to go into always the horrible high-rises we're looking at all over the place. Our city doesn't really need many more high-rises. But anyway, so thank you very much for listening to me, and I do enjoy coming to these meetings, and I find, I think you guys accomplished quite a bit here. Thank you very much, and good luck on anyone who runs in, is it this November already?
Next year, yeah. We'll move on to the next one. Just FYI, Steelcraft did have a town hall meeting last night, so they did a public town hall and explained the concept of all that, yeah. Gil Malogen, did I do that right?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank the city council for allowing me to come to speak with you. My name is Gil Malogen. I am Outreach Manager for the Motavia Foundation. We have a no-cost weatherization program. We're funded by Southern California Gas and Edison. Our services, we've been servicing people from Southern California for the past 35 years. Our funding are from Southern California Gas, like I mentioned, and also Edison, and what it entails is we weatherize homes at no cost for the families of all of Southern California. And what we provide, we provide a service to save energy for the families, and also save them money, up to 20% to 25% of their bills, the utility bills, which is the gas bill, and also the Edison bill. Well, the service we provide, we can install weather stripping, insulation to the attic, it's also a replacement program, where we can replace the refrigerator, furnaces, a door, if the door needs to be replaced, broken windows, and everything at no cost to the family, as long as they qualify and they have to be low to moderate income. I do have the information here, but you could see it later on after your meeting. I would, our program is, we're reaching out through Southern California, we're located in the City of La Puente, Los Angeles, Palmdale, San Bernardino, also the Valley. And what we want to do is reach out to the families out here, and speak to the Asian families also, not just the other families that we're dealing with, we're dealing with a lot of Hispanic families and families within the regions. And Westminster, also Garden Grove, and Carson, we want to reach out to the families out here so we could do the service. I do have two outreach people that work for me, and they speak Vietnamese, and they're out here, they're ready to go out and speak to the families if they need the service. The services, like I mentioned, they're at no cost. We could also replace a washer for the family, refrigerator, if they need a refrigerator, and so they could save money in the future. Again, the programs have been around since 1982, the monies are coming from us, you, me, and they're coming from a care program. The monies are allocated and subsidized to agencies like us to provide the service, and that's why we're here, we're trying to reach out. City of Carson, I gave a presentation to the city council, and it's a little funny, but when I went to the city council, they had like a scoreboard right there, and they had like the six council people and the mayor, and they, for me to get voted in, it was like unanimous, and they had that score clock, and I was looking at it, so I got a one vote, two vote, five vote, six vote, and it was unanimous, and they said, "Okay, let's go with the Motavia Foundation," which was pretty neat. And that's why we're here, to open up to the people here for Garden Grove, and we just want to reach out and help the families here, and that's why, that's why I'm here, give my presentation. Questions?
It's just, it's oral communication, so it's not a, it's not a dialogue.
Oh, okay.
It's just you addressing us with whatever you want to do, that's the format for oral.
Okay. I would like to speak to council another time, and sit down, and give, you know, more PowerPoint, more information about our programs, because the programs are out there, and a lot of families don't know about us at all.
We can direct staff to contact you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Verla Lambert.
I'm Verla Lambert, resident of 60 years in Garden Grove. I'm here to continue my Verla's views on the development. I want to continue along those lines. I did attend the meeting of Olson Company, that was at, excuse me, at Cottonwood Church, and it was very good. And it did happen that one of the, that representative, that council person, Mr. Beard, showed up, some of the commissioners did show up at that meeting, very few chairs. Then they had their meeting like in three different sections, so I only got to get in one little section there. But I was very pleased to see that the representatives did show up. I know the city needs to grow, I have no objections of that, but I would like to see us prepare for this growth, and make sure that we can have accommodations for more people who come in. One thing I would also like to bring up is to, in the next project, the representative should get out before it gets this far into the project, and show the residents and... should get out before it gets this far into the project and show the residents and get the information out to them. Because there's a lot of residents still here in my generation and timeframe that have a lot invested in Garden Grove. And we want to protect our homes and our surroundings. And this hundred and twenty-two units going in with only one way in and out is not good. I have, that's similar to the place that I live in, not quite that big, but it's still very hard to go have one way in and one way out. And I'm very, thank you for listening to me, but keep this in mind. And I would like to see the representative of, when the new buildings go to come in, get in touch with their residents and whatnot. You wonder why I'm over there in West Side? I mean, I'm as far east as you can get and still be in Garden Grove. But whatever happens in Garden Grove, we're all responsible for. Not just, it costs me just as much as the fellow over there. I pay my taxes at the same place he does. And so we all need to work together to make Garden Grove great and keep it great. Thank you.
Thank you, Verla. Leland Sisk.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I have three topics I want to address, but just in case I don't get around to all of them. I emailed each of you a fuller version of my comments. You get the pleasure of reading it just before you retire for the evening. First, I'd like to address your ordinance number twenty-eight eighty-five. In the public water meeting right next door just about an hour ago, the first slide said on bullet number two, "The vision of Garden Grove is to be a safe, attractive, and economically vibrant city." It can't be a safe city if you allow people to park an RV on the street and run an electrical cable, or a water cable, or a sewer cable across the sidewalk. For people such as myself who have to wear knee braces when I go walking, I don't want to have to step over this. For a woman or a mother or father pushing a baby carriage, why do I have to lift the carriage to get over those utility cables just because someone chooses not to go park in an RV park? It's not safe. I've got more comments about that in my email, but I'll let you read those. Second topic I want to address is short-term rentals. Quite recently, the property directly across the street from me got turned into an Airbnb rental. If you look up the address and go look at it, it says on the advertisement, "It will sleep nineteen people." The last time I was in that house is about two and a half years ago. It was a previous owner, we were friends. They run a senior care facility there. I used to go over there and say hi, they were nice people. So that was the last time I was in there. Nineteen people? You've got to be kidding me. In a four-bedroom house? And yes, since it went on the market, I have seen approximately nineteen people in that house. It's ridiculous. So here's my question. On, oh, my statement. On the Airbnb website, it said that house rents for $2,000 a week. Now, I've been told by code enforcement, I live in an R1 zone, so it's illegal, all right? Honest face, it's illegal. I've also been told that they've been told to knock it off, but they continue to do it. So if they're renting this place for $2,000 a week, and the occupancy tax is fourteen percent, that's $280 a week, or $1,120 per month, the city of Garden Grove is losing. Maybe the city has enough money and we don't need any more revenue? I worked for the United States government thirty-six years, and I have never seen a public agency that couldn't use more money. So if you go on Airbnb and look at it now, and maybe you have, there's probably a few hundred Airbnb rentals in the city of Garden Grove. I've been told code enforcement can't be proactive. They can't send ad and send a knock-it-off notice to whoever's doing it. I understand they can't do that. Here's other questions I have. I call my homeowner's insurance company. They said, "If you turn your place into Airbnb rental, we'll cancel. And if you don't tell us and there is an incident, we won't pay." So my question is, if somebody sets that house across the street on fire, and it catches the house next door on fire, who's going to pay? And if you go to a hotel, who does safety inspections? The fire department? Who does sanitation inspections? The health department? That's not happening at that house across the street. Why do I have to put up with this? Uber and Lyft are up and down that street, night and day, all the time. People come stay there and they go to the convention center. And I've seen as many as six cars parked on the street and in the driveway. It needs to stop. That's a residential neighborhood, okay? My third thing I want to speak about is, I would like the city of Garden Grove to enact an ordinance that would restrict parking of recreational vehicles within a certain number of feet of the property line. For example, if I want to put up a storage shed in my backyard, I believe that I have to keep it five feet from the property line, right? That's reasonable. I expect and understand that. But if I put that same shed on the back of a truck and call it an RV, I can park it right on the property line. That's not right. That's not fair. I've lived in my house coming up on twenty-four years, and someone who lives beside me just concreted six more feet of their driveway. And now, every day when I get up and look out my kitchen window, I'm going to see an RV, even closer than it has been. I would guess it's about thirty feet long. It blocks the view, I can't see down the street, it blocks the wind, it blocks sunshine. Why do I have to put up with this? Why can't they be made to at least park it five feet from the property line, like you would a storage shed? And why can't we say that, "No, you can't park an RV within sight of the street? You can put it in your property if you can put it in the backyard." I know other cities near us have that same ordinance. Why do I have to put up with this at all? If they can put it in the backyard, fine, you can do it. If you had to park in your front yard, you can't do it, period. And we need to grandfather in. How about if you grandfather in my view? Instead of grandfathering in their right to have the motorhome parked in their front yard, how about if you grandfather in my view? Tell them, "Okay, you've got X number of years to move your RV into a storage lot." And the way that should work, if you've had that motorhome twenty-two months, you've got twenty-two months to move it. If you've had that motorhome for five years, you've got five years to move it. But if you've had the motorhome eighteen months, and the statute says you've got five years to move it, you don't get five years. You've only had the motorhome eighteen months. We can do these things reasonably. I'm not asking for it a lot. I'm just asking for what I paid for. What I bought the house for. It's the same thing with the place across the street. It's the same thing with people parking RVs, just completely. If I wanted to live in a mobile home park, I'd go live in a mobile home park. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Leland. David Terry Leatherborne.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. It's been about a year since I've been here to talk about the subjects of property. But first of all, I'm going to touch on something that the district attorney's office failed to mention when he was talking about prostitution. There's also molesters out there, and they're even involved in scouting. And during my period of Scoutmaster, I had an incident that I turned into the Garden Grove PD and to the county, and nothing was ever done. So that's, I stand awed over the district attorney's presentation of female prostitution. But this was an animal that molested young men. Children of eight, twelve years old, males. Okay, enough of that. Getting back to property names, that's what my subject that I chose on the card, right, Mayor? And I don't think we need to spend money foolishly. I don't know who this gentleman was. I tried looking him up on the computer to find out what his background was. He's not an American. My president is standing in the White House, and he's saying, "American, American, American. Let's do that." When I was here a year ago, I complained about my street being torn up. And this last two weeks, we've had construction going on Browell and Twin Tree. They tore up the old road and put down a new one. But what about all the dirt that ran all over the, all the homes in that block, in that track? I mean, we have a mess. The people haven't complained, but they should. I'm complaining because I have to get out there and wash my car because I had to go through all of that. But we have a water shortage? No, we don't have a water shortage, so I can use all the water I want on my yard, as long as I pay for it. To bring an issue on naming a street versus doing all the other things that really need done should be done first, before we go to foolishness of naming something. We could call them Kamaua because I had, that's from the land I come from, is Hawaii. I was born there. I lived in Garden Grove for sixty-four years. Nineteen fifty-three, the day Kennedy was assassinated, was the day I moved into my home. And so I've been around a little while. And I appreciate the council and the people that's serving in the council. And the other thing, I looked over at our city manager here, and he doesn't know me, but I go back a few years, and to the other city managers. And when they were putting in the Alicante and the Crown and all those hotels, I was identifying parking. Can you believe we have parking shortage? They're parking on my street, on Hampton, from the hotels. Why? It's, they have an overabundance of usage on the hotel parking. And we've got three more hotels coming in on Arbor. And more dust, more damage, and that's where I'm at. Please understand, I'm a good citizen, and I love the city of Garden Grove, that's why I stayed here. But it's making things pretty difficult when I have all these adversities that I have to go through. Please accept that. Thank you.
Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Slavery is wrong. We all know that. But we're not talking about just the human trafficking here in Orange County and in California that the district attorney addressed. I'm talking about slavery that still exists in some parts of the world. And it is not only tolerated in some of those places, it is protected by law. Now slavery is something that's been around since before recorded time. Before recorded history, there was slavery. And it's been a blight on humankind for all of our existence. But the thing that is most disturbing is that people equate slavery particularly with other issues. For instance, the statues that they want to have removed because they're symbolic of slavery. They're not symbolic of slavery. They're symbolic of some of the leaders who led armies in the Civil War. And when you have your children with you, and you approach one of these statues, and they ask, "Who was that man and what did he do?" Well, you need to answer them. You need to say, "That was General so-and-so, and he led troops in this war or that war. And when we get home, we're going to get out the books, and you're going to learn more about that individual and what he did." But if you're taking all of these monuments and statues and hiding them away, how are children going to be inspired to be curious about our history and what's happened? Some people say that, "Well, the Civil War was just about slavery." It wasn't. The Civil War was about states' rights. There is nothing in the Constitution that prohibits a state from seceding. And if cooler heads had prevailed when the southern states seceded, they could have negotiated. Now, all of the military posts that are in those southern states could have been either purchased, or they could have traded their interest in those for the posts in northern states, so that it came out even. And that way, they would not have had the violent disruption of our society that we Now, Abraham Lincoln was a lawyer. And when things got out of hand, he made a very wise decision. He said, "This is an armed insurrection." And that's a very fine distinction in international law. Because it prohibited any other country from getting involved in what was happening here. England and France loved to side with the South, but because of that, they could not because it was an internal situation within a sovereign nation, and they were not allowed by international law to intercede. The main point of all of this is that we need to not put away the things that are part of our heritage, but to understand them. Tell our children about the Civil War. Tell them about the terrible consequences of what happened. Let them learn. Because they're not going to be able to understand and grow and become useful members of our society if we don't encourage them to ask questions, to seek important venues and circumstances that lead to their education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry Grubow.
Well, I'm not going to come to complain. Thanks for allowing me to come. The RV parking ordinance that you guys are considering or that, I do appreciate the fact that there is going to be an ordinance for this. Because my office is in Harbor City, and there's a huge issue with on-site parking with RVs, where people live in them and that. I would ask, though, that you take into consideration people that do own RVs, like myself, that, you know, I mean, I race motorcycles most weekends, and that trailer comes and goes. But it's stored off-site, and we bring it, or I bring it in, just to load it, charge the batteries, and then take it out, and then do the same thing coming back, you know? I don't want it at my house either. So I think that, as far as the gentleman that complained about the cords and the hoses and this and that, I think that's a very... It's not, it's an exception and not the rule. And I think that you've got a lot of ordinances already about on-street parking. I also, the other concern that I have- I also, the other concern that I have is that the way that you, the vehicles that you have listed, um, is very vague, or, and it's, I think it's done that way deliberately because you've got off-road vehicles. Well, a Jeep can be considered an off-road vehicle, but a Jeep can also be considered a daily driver. My dual-sport bike would be considered an off-road vehicle by some, but in reality, it's a street-legal vehicle. So, the, it's, those things that you've got listed are great, and the idea is great, but there needs to be some refining. So, thanks for the time.
Honorable Mayor Steve Jones and honorable council member. I am Dr. Vichy Nguyen. I am family practitioner. I have been practicing in this area more than twenty-five years. I am president of the Emperor Quang Trung Statue Committee. On behalf of our committee, we would like to express our gratitude to the city council and city staff for working with us for over the past three years as we build the Emperor Quang Trung statue in, and mini park. The statue was paid for entirely by private fund and on, and on the five thousand square feet private, and will be benefit the public at last. Uh, you know, Emperor Quang Trung is the most famous king of Vietnam. Vietnamese respect and admire him. We anticipate that it will draw a lot of tourists to the Little Saigon and to this beautiful city of Garden Grove. The statue park is ninety-five percent complete, and as you can see in the picture, it is very beautiful. We expect to spend about two-hundred fifty thousand dollars by the time we finish the let's cap it. This five thousand square feet park will be located at the corner of Euclid Street and Business Center Parkway. This tiny business center parkway is a very short street and only a couple of hundred feet with no residence nor business address, and will have no impact to the residents nor the business there. To further enhance public awareness and draw visitor or patrons to the area, which will further improve sales tax revenue to the city, we humbly add the council to approve our request to change Business Center Parkway to Emperor Quang Trung. We sincerely thank for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. I'm pleased to be, have been a resident, am a resident of Garden Grove for the past forty-four years. Honors graduate from Pacifica High School and from Cal- California State University Long Beach where I earned a teaching credential in nineteen ninety-two in life science and chemistry. And I've worked for the Garden, I worked for the Garden Grove Unified School District for over sixteen years in a number of different certificated positions, and recently ran for the school board in Area One. We heard Mr. Charles Mitchell speak of the Civil War. We heard the previous speaker about the Emperor Quang Trung. And so it's obvious, as I have tried to convey to students, that the importance of learning history, learning and studying history, why? So that we don't repeat, that we as a country don't repeat the mistakes of the past. And so I look forward to learning more about the emperor. I don't know much about him, but I would like to learn more about him. And I, I wanna bring a couple of things to the council's attention. I know that the planning commission has already approved the name change, so I'm gonna speak to future name changes of streets. And that is that we honor, also honor, um, notables who've come to our city in the past, such as the His Holiness the Dalai Lama, who is a man of peace and integrity, who is trying to build peace and build bridges. And also that the council and the planning commission consider naming streets after notables who have lived in Garden Grove in the past. So, um, I think it's important that we recognize the Dalai Lama who has come to Garden Grove at least two or more times. And yesterday, August twenty-first, let's speak of history, we, two, two important events that will be of historical importance. One is the, of course, the solar eclipse, which reminds us, as a science teacher, I, it reminds us that we are all on spaceship Planet Earth. We can't go anywhere off of this planet, and so we have to protect our environment and our nation and the world from destroying itself. And so therefore, we need to be men and women of peace and justice. And the second historical development that happened yesterday, which will also be a major historical importance as years go by, is the president's announcement to continue the ongoing sixteen-year war, US-backed war in Afghanistan. And I, as a student of history and recognizing Charles Mitchell, the importance of him speaking on the Civil War in regard to, as a teacher, I'm concerned that students don't have enough money to pay their college tuition. We don't have enough money as a city to repair cities in the state and throughout the country, our roads and bridges and water systems. Instead, we squander four or five trillion dollars in, in a, in a, in an ongoing quagmire in Afghanistan. I am a former member of the Orange County World Affairs Council. I am an expert also on for, on a number of foreign policy issues, including Afghanistan and the situation in Iraq. And Alexander the Great failed to conquer Afghanistan. The British in the eighteen hundreds failed to conquer Afghanistan. The Soviets in the nineteen seventies failed to conquer Afghanistan. And the United States will not conquer Afghanistan because that is the historical basis, and the current situation is that we are in a quagmire and we shouldn't be there. And, uh, our country went through a terrible experience in Vietnam, and, uh, we eventually had to leave, and we will leave Afghanistan eventually. But I bring this up because the Dalai Lama is a man of peace. I'd like to see a future street in our city named after him, as well as citizens of Garden Grove who have done something to help bring peace and justice to the world and to our community. On another note, I'd like to thank Kim Hoy and her staff for moving forward and planning the Youth and Government Day, which I brought up about a year and a half or two years ago to reinstate that program. As a high school student at Pacifica, I participated in the city's Youth and Government Day program. It has gone through about a twenty-year-plus hiatus of the city not having it. It will be brought back, God willing, in the spring, sometime in the spring with our, and the city is doing that, and I wanna thank Kim Hoy and her staff. With regard to the water ordinance, uh, for the landscape water efficiency requirements and updating the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance, item 4A on the agenda. I would like to speak in favor of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable to Mr. Mayor and councilmen. My name is Nina Tian. I am one of the tenant of Euclid Business Center located at one-four-two-nine-one Euclid Street, and I'm here to support the name change from Business Center Parkway to Emperor Quang Trung. This is my first time here, a little bit nervous. Even though like my part-time job is work for Little Saigon TV, but I'm not grow in front of a lot of councilmen and mayor, even though seen them every year. The lady back there, her point of view is well-taken, yes. But to compare Garden Grove and Chapman to Business Center is kind of lame. Because like, even though back in many years ago, Garden Grove and Chapman has like several businesses and residential, which is like, it's hard for you guys to change the map and change everything. But with the Business Center Parkway, they just have like around like, I believe, three-hundred square feet or three-hundred fifty max. No residential, no business under Business Center Parkway. And as of right now, we have like the statue, which is like, Dr. V just told to our member that they spent a lot of money for the statue. It's not about the money, it's about the name of the street change to Emperor Quang First of all, having a street name Emperor Quang Trung on the street is for us, our young Vietnamese-American generation to remember and practice his philosophy, and for our children and many generations to come to learn about history. And also like, we call the street from Bich Dao to Euclid and from Ma Phan to Garden Grove. With our Vietnamese community or our relatives, we all call like Little Saigon area. And to have the street name Emperor Quang Trung on that area is will attract a lot of visitor, especially the thousand and thousand of Vietnamese people from all over the world come here to visit us. Take the example like, you can see Thet Trung Tu, we have like thousand of people to come to our Little Saigon area, or in Lunar New Year. I believe like you all know Lunar New Year, we have more than twenty thousand people around the Garden Grove city. And if we have the street name change and the statue there, it will support us and will bring many more traffic load to our area. And I just hope like, please, please will understand because like, all of us in here just want to do something for the country and for our city. It's not just for our Vietnamese community. And like, and also like, we are younger generation here, we are taught to drink water, remember the source. And all we want to do is honor our ancestor and hope that our young Vietnamese-American generation to learn Emperor Quang Trung philosophies and be proud of that history. We also want to draw more visitors to Garden Grove city. And thank you for all of your time and appreciate for all of your support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that concludes oral communications. We will now recess to conduct other agency business, so we'll go to successor agency. And I'll open the successor agency meeting. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Tu Hau Nguyen?
Here.
Member Buoi?
Here.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Okay, consent items, we just have minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Is it not working? Still not working.
Did yours pop up?
Mm-hmm.
I did it.
I voted.
Everybody?
I voted.
Not yours?
Two of you? The same?
Just one.
Just like that? Do you vote?
Yeah.
I did.
I got the wayward computer here.
Is it on successor?
Are you on successor?
No, it's like, it's mine's all messed up, yeah.
Roll call?
Oh, there it is.
Oh.
Oh, mine are coming up as a July meeting.
Oh, wow. Okay, so, did that compute?
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay.
When it came up, I voted.
Boom. Look at that.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to Sand District.
With that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Member Buoi?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klumpenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tu Hau Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. Thank you. We have covered oral communication consent items. We have one to receive and file the minutes for July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen. I'll entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
There's a motion, second. Call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes. Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tu Ha Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here, thank you. We have covered oral communication consent items. We have wanted to receive and follow the minutes for July 25th, 2017. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion second, call for the vote, please.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Item number three is public hearings, which we have done. So item four is items for consideration, and we're going to review a contract for consulting engineers. We have staff report.
Yeah, that's correct. This is an award of contract to AKM Consulting Engineers for professional engineering services for the 2017 Sewer System Rehabilitation Plan Phase One. And soon we will have Mr. Murray here to give the staff report.
Okay, tonight's, thank you Ms. Palmeroy and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, you're being asked to consider award of a contract to AKM Consulting for professional engineering services for a sewer system rehabilitation plan, this is phase one. Staff put out proposals on and on, or actually got responses for three firms back for this, this particular work. You could tell, not doing a very good job with this one. And AKM was rated, rated highest. Please excuse me for this. Unfortunately, I'll be perfectly honest, I was not prepared for this particular report. But the cost will be just over, well, almost $550,000. And we finance what's a sewer. And AKM was, was rated highest out of the other firms, Civil Tech and GIG. We went through the contracts, checked them for references. AKM's done a lot of work for us in the past, and we recommend that you go forward with this. And it concludes staff's report.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second it.
Motion is second, call for the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, any matters for members? Seeing none, we will go to adjournment Tuesday, September 26th, 2017. With that, we'll go back to City Council.
Okay, then, we will move on to consent items. Recommended that items 3A through 3K are acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull any items.
I would, I'd like to pull 3B.
Okay.
Approval of proclamation honoring the dedication of the Michael Mansour Memorial Stadium.
Sure. Okay, any others?
3A, that's going to be continued. It will be relisted on the next agenda.
Okay. We have a motion for the balance?
Remove the motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you, staff, all you, 3B.
Michael Mansour was someone that I attended Garden Grove High School with. He's obviously a national hero, a hometown hero. And I just thought that in honor of, of him and what is happening at Garden Grove High School and the stadium dedication, that it'd be great to read the proclamation dedicating the stadium as the Michael Mansour Memorial Stadium. Do I read that?
Please.
Okay. Proclamation, dedication of the Michael A. Mansour Memorial Stadium, September 8th, 2017. Whereas the Michael A. Mansour Memorial Stadium at Garden Grove High School is named after former Garden Grove High School Argonauts football player. And whereas the Michael A. Mansour Memorial Stadium replaces a 60-year-old edifice, it now seats 3,500 people with a new artificial turf surface, press box, and concession stand. The stadium services Garden Grove, Los Amigos, Santiago High Schools. And whereas, United States Navy Petty Officer Second Class Michael A. Mansour, who made the ultimate sacrifice on September 29th, 2016 in Aramidi, Aramidi, Iraq, when he courageously gave his life to save his platoon members. And whereas, Michael A. Mansour was born on April 5th, 1981, in Long Beach, California, he was raised in Garden Grove and graduated from Garden Grove High School in 1999. And whereas, at the age of 25, Michael A. Mansour joined the elite group of the Navy SEALs, graduating at the top of his class. And whereas, on April 8th, 2008, Petty Officer Second Class Michael Mansour was posthumously presented America's highest decoration for military valor, the Medal of Honor, in recognition of his heroic act by President George W. Bush. And whereas, Petty Officer Second Class Michael A. Mansour also received a Silver Star, the third highest honor for combat bravery, and a Bronze Star for other selfless acts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Garden Grove City Council does hereby proclaim the dedication of the Michael A. Mansour Memorial Stadium and takes great pride in honoring one of Garden Grove's most admired and treasured heroes on August 22nd, 2017. Thank you.
Would you like to move it?
I would like to move it, yes, I'll motion that.
I'll second, call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, we are moving on to public hearings, 4A.
Mayor, members of the City Council, if I may interject, if we can continue this public hearing until the next meeting, to a day certain, I noticed that a major part of the ordinance is not including your packet. So if we can continue it, we'll make sure that Exhibit A to the ordinance is attached.
You need action to continue it?
Yes.
Direction.
That way we don't have to renotice, so.
We'll continue it to the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Remove the motion to continue to the next council meeting.
Second.
Call the vote.
Second.
Who are we waiting?
Mr. Buoi?
It's thinking.
There it goes.
We need a faster computer.
Motion received, seven yes votes to continue this item. Thinking too hard.
Thank you. We're good?
Item 5A, item 5A, item 5A is to consider adoption of a resolution approving a street name change from Business Center Parkway to Emperor Quang Trung.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's City Council is being asked to adopt a resolution to change the street name of Business Center Parkway to Emperor Quang Trung from Euclid Street to Corporate Drive. The street is about 350 feet long, and there are currently no addresses, eliminating, that eliminates post office issues. At the request of the Emperor Quang Trung Statue Committee, staff notified all property owners within 300 feet of the, the street and scheduled a planning commission meeting. And on August 3rd, 2017, the planning commission met, held a public hearing, and adopted a resolution recommending approval by the City Council for the street name change. All costs for the name change will be picked up by the committee. And this concludes staff's report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. This is just an item, it's not a public hearing, so it's just up for our own discussion or, or action. Anyone like to speak or ask any questions of staff?
Can I ask a question? Just generally, how do we, pardon me, how do we name streets? It's a, how do we name streets? How do we come up with names?
Most of the time, they're developed by the developers. You know, they come up with a list of street names that will fit their particular development. You could tell this is an industrial development that it's in, so you had Business Center Drive, Corporate Way, things like that, all kind of mixed with the development. And kind of the same type of a deal with residential, where all the names will kind of carry a theme. And those names are forwarded to various departments, most important like police and fire, to make sure there aren't any similar names nearby so that they, they don't get confused in, in case they get calls for service and the post offices involved as well.
Actually, it's not questions, it's, it's about a statement. I support the street name change just because, first of all, this is more like a very short street for 350 feet, right? So no address associated, and at the same time, it's part of the blending for Little Saigon. Because much, I think all the businesses in there are the Vietnamese. And one thing I, I do, it's okay with you?
Please.
Is that as a second generation, I mean, we are proud to be American. We're proud to serve America, to serve the country as American. And at the same time, we're proud to carry our heritage as a Vietnamese-American. So I just want to make that statement.
I would like to support this request mainly because the younger generation have inspired by this, by this person. And many of the younger generation, Vietnamese-American generation have joined the US Armed Force. Some of them have rise to the rank of generals in the army, and other have made the ultimate sacrifice. For example, the recent accident in the Japan Sea when the Laskaraya, the USS Laskaraya collide with the tanker in the Japan Sea, seven sailors, seven Navy sailors die in that accident. And one of the seven sailors is a Vietnamese sailors who joined the US Navy not long ago. And so I think with that, we can see that the younger generation of the Vietnamese who are inspired by this, this emperor to be very patriot, patriot, and they have served our nation and made a lot of sacrifice. And so I think with this statue, it will be an inspiration for, for many Vietnamese generation in the future to uphold our new home, which is the US, the US of America. And, and that they will serve us well in the future.
I would just like to say that I'm in support of the street name change and would like to thank Fat for his efforts in putting this together and the committee who's here who spoke, as well as we heard someone during oral communications talk about the importance of statues and its historical references and how we should learn our history. And so I think that this is a really good moment for young Vietnamese-Americans such as myself and some who I can see in the room to take a moment and learn about the history of this emperor. So thank you, and I'll wait for a motion and then I'll second.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I understand the historical significance, and it's a street name change. But if you go out there and see that area, it's a small 350 feet. It represents a street, it's not a monument per se. The monument is actually on private property, so I want to make that clear. And that's sort of the gateway or entry into Little Saigon area. So that's a tourist destination, destination. So it's a marking, it's an indicator, it's a beacon, it tells tourists, this is Little Saigon. And that's important for our city from a business perspective, apart, in addition to the historical aspect of it. But we have policies that we've established for monuments, be it on public lands, on parks and such. I think we did a thorough job. This is more of a private economic area. I'd say 80, 90% is Vietnamese businesses. And as I said, it's the gateway, it's Little Saigon, it's a tourist destination. So with that regard, I think it's good to have that there. You go throughout the whole city, and you can turn down streets on harbor, and it will have, Great Wolf will be an indicator, and that's, that leads into that economic project. You have hotels along there and, and as indicators. So it's a directional, it tells visitors, this is where Little Saigon is. I think it's beneficial for that purpose. And there's no impact fiscally as, as indicated, and the nonprofit group will support the cost of putting it in. So overall, from that point of view, I would like to support this motion for that particular area, for the name change of the street. And just to let the audience know, going through our list of streets, it's rather interesting. We have a wide variety of streets. You go through Garden Grove, you'll find Abbey Road, you'll find Penny Lane, you'll find Vegas Way. But you'll also find names of significant citizens who were part of the city of Garden Grove. So it covers the whole gamut of names for streets. As the Public Works Director said, that it, it comes up as a private matter for a lot of these coming up to decide upon. So in addition to the sensitivity of the historical significance, I think as an economic beacon or, or sign or, or entry into that area of Little Saigon, I'm supportive of this name change to the street.
Thank you. Please, John.
Yeah, I want to make a comment because, you know, when, when it was published in the paper that this was going to be happening, you know, a lot of people contact us, and, and I had a lot of constituents that were like, hey, why are we doing that? You know, we're Americans and all that. But to really understand, you have to go down there, see where it is. You have to understand the Vietnamese people and the Vietnamese culture to really grasp what it really means to them. We're not, you know, it's, it's really, to them, the respect and the culture that they live in, to that respect, it just means a lot in their culture and their community. It's part of the Little Saigon downtown area. And I would say probably 80% of that community there is probably Vietnamese or Asian-American, Asian. And so I, I support it.
One last key point, it was mentioned, and it's in the staff report too, but to kind of something Peggy Bergen said earlier is this particular stretch of street doesn't have any properties that address on it. So there are no properties that would have to change their property address or change their letterhead or do any kind of thing. It's a, it's a street that doesn't have any, any properties attached to it. So it's kind of a simple one in that regard from a logistical standpoint. Fat, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to rename the Business Center Parkway to Emperor Quang Trung.
I'll second that. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, we're going to ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption.
Yeah, this, this is ordinance number 2885, and it's an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, adding section 1056-115 to chapter 1056 of Title X of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to recreational vehicle parking restrictions.
Thank you.
I could just start a discussion. I would like to actually move to approve this. I'll make the motion to approve it, and we can have a discussion. I know that there's a lot of talk recently in the last couple readings, there's a lot of fear and angst about what's happening. But I think when the people understand that we're going to streamline any permit process online or on an application, there's no cost to it. It's as easy as pulling up or, or pushing a button on your app saying that you're, you're pulling a permit for 72 hours or a week or whatever it is. But there's, it's really going to be self-policed by the neighborhood, I believe. I don't believe we're going to be spending a lot of time and money policing it. I think it's kind of a self-policing thing. There's not going to be any cords or any sewer lines across the sidewalk. That's not going to happen. And it's, you know, it's really going to help the city a lot clean up the situation, a lot of situations that we have. And I think most of the city, we have responsible RV owners, I'm one myself, and it's not going to be a problem, as far as I'm concerned.
I'll second for discussion, and just wanted to add one kind of comment for context is usually things, items like this come forward and they're aired out in a public format. And then by the time you get to a second reading, the second reading is kind of just a rubber stamp of what was already done. It's funny in this case that we didn't really get any complaints or opposition or sort of public comments until after we had already gone through that whole public process. I think that the wave of comments that we've seen on social media and via email came fairly late in this. And to your point, I think people just need to get educated a little bit about the problems we were addressing based on resident concerns that we had experienced prior to bringing this item up and just the conscientious effort that we went through to try and establish something that was not intended to be punitive whatsoever, but to address issues and to also allow people who are kind of the poster child of how to have recreational vehicles and do it right without creating nuisances for their neighbors, their neighborhoods. So I think it was very well thought out. I know I took lead from yourself and Councilmember Chris Beard on sort of bringing this forward and being engaged in the thought process with staff and with the community and getting there. And I know you're a proud owner of an RV, and you're, you're one of the ones who does it right, so.
I, I like it, it's going to keep the neighborhoods beautiful, and I think it's going to be a good thing. It might be a little bit of a nuisance at first, but the, the permitting, we're not even going to enforce anything until we have the permit process set up online or on an app. And if you're, if you have, if you're not, if you don't have a computer or you don't have the app, you can come down to the, the city at the water counter and, and pull a permit or perhaps even call. We're, we're working on that too, that maybe you could just call it in. But I believe it's more of a self-policing thing. If, if there's a nuisance in a particular neighborhood, then they're going to call us and we're going to come out. We're not going to be patrolling the neighborhoods necessarily just looking for that violation and going after RV owners. That's not, that's not the reason for this ordinance, so.
I would like to, to point out a couple things that Mr. Livingston have mentioned about public safety, especially when people running electrical wire across the sidewalk. I think it's important that staff, when they pull collar that, it need to be protected under, under rubber conduits so that people doesn't trip on it and, and hurt themselves. So I look forward to staff to make sure that, you know, public safety will be addressed.
Yeah, and I believe they excluded that from the ordinance. There is, right, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, the first draft had an absolute prohibition, and when the council, because the Public Safety Commission had recommended that language and the City Council on introduction, removed that provision. You know, personally, I don't see many RVs running wires to the sidewalk. Most of the ones that I've seen that have connections are on a driveway. It, it is liability for the property owner to do that. So again, this is something that, you know, with common sense, you can avoid liability for your own private property.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second, call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. We'll move on to matters. We do have a report highlighting streamlined initiatives with Building Services Division as requested by City Manager Stas.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and just to, before I introduce this next topic, just to pay you back on to what Councilman O'Neal had said about the ordinance that we just approved. It will go into effect thirty days from now. And in the meantime, we, just as Councilman said, we are making this process very easy, very streamlined. I think it's going to be implemented just as Councilman O'Neal indicated. We don't have time as a police department to spend time on this. It'll be complaint-based and we'll be, you know, we're trying to, you know, just respond to some of the issues that we've had with RVs being parked on the street. So, I think it'll, during these next thirty days, we'll make it very easy for people to just print out a permit if they need it for five days and go about their business. Should be very easy for our community to follow up with. And then on this item, again, this is something that came out of, if council members remember, from our retreat with Councilman Bowie, I think specifically made point of this issue with, you know, what are we doing with streamlining our building permitting processes? And our department has spent a good bit of time with some technical changes, how we do daily inspection logs, how our community can apply for permits online. And so, we wanted to report back very briefly, I don't think this is a long presentation, but very briefly on some of the things that they've done. And again, good information, I think, for me, the council members and the community to hear this.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. I'm pleased to provide a briefing, a short briefing to the council highlighting some of the department initiative relating to Building Services. I know it was an initiative that came out of our action plan following the council retreat this spring. And, you know, with the appointment of the new Chief Building Official, David Dent, he has extensive experience in terms of streamlining and incorporating technology into, you know, fast-tracking permitting and inspections. And some of the recommendations and tasks that we are working on over the next year are certainly implementation items that I would like David to walk you through in terms of anticipating some new tools that will be available to our residents and those that do business in the city of Garden Grove. So, I'm going to turn it over to David.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. And I'm excited. I mean, I've been here almost two and a half months now and had a chance to really look and see what the process is now and where I can see it moving to in the future. And again, my number one initiative with the Building Department is to streamline and deliver a high level of customer service. I mean, I've seen it in process. I've been implementing it prior to being here, and I want to bring it here to the city of Garden Grove. And what is streamlining? I mean, what does that actually mean? You know, for those that haven't been through the permit process, it's, you're spending a good amount of money to improve your property. And you want that money to be used effectively and you want your time to be not wasted in the sense of the processing, but more on the building and the completion of that work. And the Building Department is the start of it. We're here to help the citizens. We're here to make a difference to their process and not be scared of the department and get lost in the mix. So, streamlining to me means, for one, they can get information quite easily. You know, that's going to be upgrading the website. It's going to be providing information and more outreach to the community, educating them on what they need to do, who they need to hire, and what professionals are associated with the process. I mean, it's very important that that begins the process because they're oftentimes not given the correct information when they come into our office and we're having to re-educate them to get them in the right direction. Again, that's the outreach portion of it. I'm working really diligently with IT to really bring those tools to the customers. And again, they can go online. We're revamping the website to make things a little more easier to find, more user-friendly. And again, from there, you have the actual plan check process. You know, I want to move the city more towards a paperless, streamlined, submittal process to where you don't have to kill a few trees in the initial stages. As we all know, plans don't typically go through the first time through. So, I would like to digitize that first couple processes to eliminate the traffic that comes through the lobby at this current time. I mean, I think now we're getting to an age where a lot of these things are digital and can be checked that way, saving costs and money to professionals that citizens have to pay for. And again, every cost savings for the citizens is a help in this process because again, they're all being stretched out to really develop their property and improve their value. And then from there, we want to improve the department interrelations, which will be more so with the software, connecting the departments and the communication to streamline how quick plans get processed, working together with other departments. I think it's going to be very, very helpful to make sure that there's no redundancies in the plan checks, that each department is being efficient in their plan check to make sure it goes through timely. Because again, I've been at the counter now for the last three weeks, kind of experimenting with what's coming in and what the customers want and getting some of their feedback to know where we're going to move in the direction that's going to be positive for them. Because it's all about the citizens and they're spending their money to improve their property. And again, from there, it turns into the inspection service. We've started making a few of those changes now, which is allowing them to see some of their daily timeframes for their inspections online, a lot more quickly and more efficiently. So, they're not calling into the department and being on the phone for five, ten minutes waiting for a timeframe. They can now go online and check some of those services. And on top of that, in the next fiscal year or so, we want to move to complete online permitting for some of the smaller projects like water heaters and mechanical systems, re-roofs. I often see the lobby filled with just those small permits alone. So, if we can get those online, get them paid online, it's going to reduce the traffic for a lobby that's not already large enough to house all the people coming through. And again, so people can do it from home. I mean, that's a lot of what we want to see in here and keep the professionals on the site where they should be, doing the work and not down in our lobby, spending hours waiting for something that may take only five or ten minutes online. So, again, IT is going to be great. I'm working with Lisa and Scott's been supportive of all these changes. And I look forward to really revamping the whole Building Department and delivering a customer service that I know Garden Grove wants to deliver. Thank you.
As it will eliminate paper loss, it eliminate this very slow process of deliver the paperwork from one desk to the other. By going paperless, thing can be delivered instantly with accuracy. So, I believe the saving will be tremendous, not only for our city, but for our resident as they get their permit done faster. I would like to ask one question though. With the addition of auxiliary drilling unit, do we have a lot of backlog already? Do we have any idea how much backlog has that been increased?
Are you talking about the ADUs?
ADUs.
Currently, we have twenty-three in the process. And that was starting from July thirteenth, I believe, is when we started the process. And I only have one black log plan check at this current time. So, we're up to date with all the plan check processes for the.
So, someone commented on Facebook that we have seventy application backlog. That's not correct. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I'd like to just say I'm super excited about David coming on board and what the city's doing to streamline this. Being a contractor and a construction guy my whole life, there's nothing more exciting about having that quick action because as a contractor, most people don't know, if you're doing work all over the county or over the state, you have to have a business license in every city you work in. If you have to walk into the counter of each one of these cities, if you're a guy changing water heaters, for instance, you've got to have your license already in effect. If you can pull your license online, if you can pull your water heater permit, it saves you driving from that job site to the city, pulling the permit, driving back. And then what I'm more excited about is the attitude of our Building Department. There's nothing more discouraging for a contractor, a builder, a homeowner than to walk into a counter and they're received with like, it seems like the enemy or they just, you know, like you're the bad guy walking in. Our counter, you walk in, they're there to help you, assist you. This is what you need to do. If it's not right, they'll tell you what you need. Come back and we'll do it. That's what I'm excited about. The customer service and then the ability of those online permits is huge. It's a huge step for Garden Grove going forward, for everybody involved. Thanks.
Thank you. Please.
I also want to add, I would like to commend Lisa Kim and the staff, especially to follow up on certain issue when the constituent request and you guys respond faster than the lightning, I would say. So, that, you know, the constituents, the residents very appreciated for all the response. So, that's a great thing. Also, that I'm not a contractor, so I don't know how the permit going to submit or request. But one thing I look at is it's like a Six Sigma project. It's like streamline, fast respond, automations, paperless, and then you can do by the, you know, online, by the phone, smartphone, so that you can request, submit, and, you know, just by press the button, right? So, that's very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's been said, but I'll just add on, just the logistics from the applicant side of the table of having to wade through application forms, trying to round up all these different documents from your Title Twenty-four guy and your civil engineer and your structural and round that all up and then figure out how many copy sets and what size do I got to print? And just all that nightmare of logistics that stretches like another week or two just trying to figure out how many copy sets and what size and sending them over to ARC or that kind of stuff, right? So, the thought of going digital is timely. I'm not aware of any other cities doing it. It's about time. And so, it's pretty innovative that we're doing that. So, let's take a leadership role and really implement that. Let's do it in planning too. So, it's a good, it's about time. Seriously, I mean, we get, we must, we must receive probably a truckload of rolled-up paper plans every month, right?
Okay.
Talking about killing a lot of trees and just kind of the inefficiency in the digital world of having everything still on paper, back and forth. So, anyways, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matters from council members going around the horn.
Just starting here?
Yeah.
Okay, if I may, yeah, I'd like to comment on their Budget Subcommittee. I mean, as you recall, the council put together this Budget Subcommittee with myself, Councilwoman Kim Nguyen, Councilman O'Neal. We've met on two occasions. Now, the staff support to it is the City Manager, Scott Stiles, our Finance Director, Kingsley Okuriki, Ann Efrid from Finance, Maria Stipe, and we have Sean Park. So, pretty good group. There's been a number of things that the Subcommittee's been undertaking. And I'll just give you some brief bullet points here. We've done, we're going to do a review of the city's internal service funds. And we're going to review, I guess it was at the request of Fat, to review the tenure history of the fund accounts. Let's see, we're reviewing, conducting a review of the city's future financial sustainability. We're analyzing city revenue data. We are meeting with department heads in the future to understand their critical needs, any mandates they may have. We're determining if the current budget aligns with community priorities. And we're also identifying methods for gaining community input on the question of alignment with the budget. So, those are the highlights. And we're going to be a busy group. We've been busy already. We're going to work on some of these initiatives and they're already underway. And so, the Subcommittee will be reporting back to the council as our work continues. So, just want to give you a quick update of what we're doing.
Thank you. John, anything?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I wanted to comment on Mr. Sis Leland's comment about the Airbnbs. There are a lot of problem situations in the city, but we are attacking it or, you know, going after it as much as we can legally do. So, there are some problems. There's a lot of problem areas in the city and they're being addressed by the city attorney, the police department, local residents. So, we know what's going on and we're looking at it. So, as much as we can. Number two, I can't let this go by without mentioning to my wife that I love her because it's our thirty-first wedding anniversary tomorrow. And we were married in Bixby Chapel, which is now Living Spring Church. And we drove the car, what's now the lobby is where the car drove through when we got in the car. So, love you, honey. Thanks for the thirty-one years. I'm looking forward to another thirty-one.
How cool. Tuhan. Okay, Kim?
I wanted to invite the community to a free, fun, special event happening in my district, District Six, tomorrow, August twenty-third, at the Garden Grove Elks Lodge, starting at six thirty PM. It's the last concert of the Summer Concert Series, which is hosted each year by the Garden Grove Community Foundation. It's the first time that the concert is being held in this region, and I'm really excited that the band Soto will be our finale. There will be free activities for kids such as games and face painting. Also, Elks will be selling food and drinks. So, please come hungry and support them. Gates open at five. Bring a blanket and/or some chairs. And I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Quickly, I just, going back to the presentations on the Building Abatement and Code Enforcement one oh one, I think that was fantastic. I think we need more of that. I think the public really wants to know what's going on in both of those different departments and just the day-to-day and let the public know that, you know, we are working and we are doing things within the code department and building abatement. So, anything we can do to continue to shed more light on what's going on there and give that information to the public, I think is great. And from a vector control standpoint, summer's wrapping up, but there's still obviously some warm weather ahead. So, remember to dump and drain your water, check your screens and repair them if they have any tears or rips, and to keep that bugger pellin on until the weather cools down. Thanks.
I would like to thank you again, the staff at Building and Planning Department for very excellent presentation that we conducted to the public, inform them about the ADU. There's a lot of people come that day, about, I think about sixty to eighty people come that day, a lot of people from the newspaper and television. And hopefully, they, you know, help our city sending the right message to the, you know, the resident that this is what they can do and this is how they should do it legally and properly. Thank you very much for a good job.
You got one more?
Can I add one more thing? We usually report on things after we do them. But tomorrow, there's a special day for another couple in Garden Grove that happens to be in my district. And they're going to be celebrating, John and Rose Bersay are celebrating their seventieth wedding anniversary.
Wow.
Seventy years. They lived in Garden Grove, I think, since nineteen fifty-four. I went to school with their son, Don, and they have a daughter, Charlie, a son, Patrick and Michael, and they still live in the same home they bought in fifty-four. So, they're celebrating seventy years tomorrow. And there's going to be a mass at St. Columbus in the morning to acknowledge that.
Seventy years.
Seventy years.
You need thirty-nine more years in order to catch that.
Seriously. I hope to make it there. They're a great example of Garden Grove and just a great couple and great, great kids. And they've done a great job in Garden Grove. She was a postwoman. She walked a route. And I'm not even sure what John did, Mr. Bersay, but I'm going to find out. So, thanks for letting me jump back in there. Appreciate it.
Thank you. City Manager Scott Stas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members, just two quick, two quick items. First of all, to follow up on Councilman Beard's comments about the Budget Subcommittee. He mentioned a lot of things. We have a lot on our plate in the coming year. We're scheduling meetings every two weeks to go through a lot of this stuff. The one thing I wanted to mention to the council members, during the budget process, there was a lot of discussion about our internal service funds, our workers' comp fund, our vehicle replacement fund, all of that sort of stuff. So, through my office, one of the things that we had committed to do, we're going to be engaging the work of a firm that specializes in review of this. It's going to be at a relatively small cost that can be managed under one of my budget funds. And we're going to have them spend some time looking at our internal service funds. And when they're done with their report, they're going to come to a council meeting and they're going to report to you on what their independent findings are. They're probably going to spend some time talking to our Budget Subcommittee members. They'll talk They'll talk to our fleet people, other folks that are involved in some of our internal service funds, certainly meeting with our finance people. And I think it's going to be a good educational process for me, I'm sure for you, and for anybody else that's interested in this. So that is in the works and that'll be one of the first items that's coming out of the budget subcommittee's work. And we'll be reporting back to them and then ultimately to you on what's going on with that. The only other item I want to mention to you, just in the last day or so, I've had a couple of comments from councilmembers about just follow-up and questions about how the music festival went. And so just wanted to, I had a debrief today with our community services department, our police department, our fire department, and just very briefly, it won't take me very long, a couple of my takeaways from my meetings with them this morning were, number one, we had a very short amount of time to prepare for something of this magnitude and our staff really did, really an outstanding job of working together with all the players who were involved to kind of pull this together in literally seven weeks or so, I think is the notice that we got ahead of time. So obviously, you know, down the road, if there's more events like this, we're going to be working with promoters, vendors, LFA, whoever is involved in proposing things to us. Obviously, if we have a greater amount of time to prepare, we can even make the event even better than, you know, what they, what they've had. The management of the events by all accounts went very well on all of these things. There's always glitches behind the scenes that the public doesn't see. Our internal people are working on stuff. They have little issues, but generally, all of our work with the managers that were involved in promoting this event went quite well. We had about 19 complaints throughout the event, which considering the two days of a festival, I wouldn't characterize as, as really too many at all. Most of those were around sound and the bass and stuff like that and some of the smoking that occurred out in the festival. So there were only 19, I think. In the future, also with some of the, we didn't always have enough time to screen some of the vendors that were providing food and services at the event. We talked a little bit internally about having more time to do that. From the police, and that was from the community services standpoint. From the police department's standpoint, they felt like they had the right deployment of officers for the event, although a lot of their officers worked 12 to 15 hours a day, according to the police chief, which is quite long. And probably some restructuring and redeployment of how we have officers working in the event is pretty, is going to be important for us. About 12 vehicles were towed that were parking in no parking areas. But in all the parking plan that was devised by our staff and was followed quite well by the people that put on the event, and I think our staff felt that the parking plan was, was, worked out nice. And I think as long as we are monitoring, we did a lot of monitoring of some of the genres and some of the groups that were, that were playing at the event. Some were not so well-received in the very beginning and the promoters worked real well with us on not including everybody in the event, and I think that worked well. We had two, I think they estimated 7,000 folks the first day and maybe 8,000 the second day, and there was only one fight that was recorded by, by police during that event. So really, given the number of people, really, you know, quite amazing really on, on, on that. From the fire chief's standpoint, what he's learned is that from a crowd control standpoint, he felt good about what he predicted and worked with the promoters on the number of people that were there. It was about what he expected. We would have probably had a couple more paramedics on duty, especially the first day if we could have, but that's just kind of, you know, living and learning with trying to understand with those numbers of people, what is involved. I actually attended the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting this morning and I asked them the question about what were the reactions they got from businesses in the community about the event. And they, by all accounts, they were getting good reactions from the businesses about the event. Businesses made money and for the most part, they really didn't have any complaints from the business community from their standpoint about it. There's been some discussion about how many of these events we think we can do every year. I think the staff probably feels that on an ongoing basis, if it was the council's policy to think about this, we could probably do one or two a year. These are big events. To do more would probably require some additional work on our part to think about that, scheduling, how it, how it interfaces with other events that we have, Strawberry Festival, tree lighting ceremony, all the things that are going on there. So, you know, all in all, I think our staff felt pretty good about how they managed the event and how it went. And so we'll see what other requests we get in the future. So I wanted to, I know a couple of you asked me about that and I said I'd give a quick update today, so just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you very much. City Attorney Omar.
Just one item for the record. We did have a closed session earlier in the meeting and there is no reportable action out of that closed session.
Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good night.